Public hearing to order. This is the first hearing is the application, well, it's the building rehabilitation portion. And at this point, if people have an opportunity to sign in at the back, you have to sign in.
She backed their gift.
Okay, that'd be great. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Jim Cummings.
Thank you. The, I'll go through the agenda. We're referring to, come on here, as well as, as well as the attachment that explains them. I'm not going to read all the attachments, but go through them so we know what they're talking about there. The hearing purposes are to attain citizens' opinions and suggestions and priorities, require program, require, provide, require program information, information in public discussion of project. The program is now, the national objective are that community development, sorry, develop block grants, which is the, I mentioned at the top of the agenda, in the program, and involve loan fund closeout. And I'm going to demonstrate how about the closeout, because they came out together. This is about using what you define for these activities. The objectives are better for low-income persons, prevent eliminating slum for blight, slums and blight, meeting, meeting development need having particular urgency. The eligible, ineligible, I once mentioned, are provided in the second, the first attachment with the two-page back, back to back, it's a back-to-back, give like, it tells you where the program came from, its origin, what it means, the objectives that it mentions, and explain those objectives, and what they are, how they work, and down below, the, this development activity, under the first one, a full-phase public infrastructure, under public infrastructure, including the low-income barriers, and re-rotation, which explains what is regarding what can be re-rotated, rotated with block grant funds. Now, this actually, as I said at the top, has been written so that it doesn't cover absolutely opportunity under program four, for, for funds and other purposes, but it does vote the eligible activity that, and ineligible, that this program could be used for, and it goes out to attach to them, and it's beyond this, after this, the list of activities that the county is going to undertake. You see what's listed in the public infrastructure category, and what's it include, and then the re-rotation of, and of buildings. Now, this does not include housing, because that's a different category, but that is an eligible activity as well. And then in the back of the second sheet, is the list of economic development activity. Those, all these are eligible under the act already, and always have been, and, but they're, but the focus here is on what the activities are that the county has chosen to undertake, but they're all, still, it's a little long there. Any questions, any eligible activities are, next to last, they provided, and housing and there are two, by the way. And the list is, is quite extensive, but what can do with the funds is to, like, get a longer list, and if you wanted to have a totalist, all activity that I referred to, like federal statutes. Now, the primary program requirements, is meeting one of the three national objectives, and by those, benefit to low-income persons is primary, that's within the act. The benefit of the building is $948,505.70, that's the funds that the county turned back to the state. And, also, there's issue here regarding revenue and leverage. There is no leverage required with program, unless the activities funded are greater than the resources. Right now, we cannot anticipate that happening, so there isn't any of this thing. There should be no leverage involved. The red is the issue regarding things that the county has to do with the program, and have today, the application within, things to our research and provide, or to be had. There are other requirements that we must, the information must, dispense at the, at the public hearing, that is, that no activity should be undertaken that would displace anyone voluntarily on their own, or displaced businesses, and that if they're, essentially done, the, the federal law requires certain kind of measure to be done to take that happen. There is no, there are no activities under this proposal that would displace anyone voluntarily on their property, taken or displaced. Access to public records, access to records by the public are the same for this program as anything else, any other activity the county has, the other funds it has, everything it has, that are accessible. Any rule of type, those funds type, if, if records fit for this project. That's what we require mentioned at the end of the hearing, even the, in the minutes. Now, the project, whole project here, under this category, is removing architectural barriers and public building grants, et cetera. Now, that means grant three, that has been accessed to the building. What I provided to you is, at the second, actually the last sheet on here, another two-sided sheet, is the project summary. And the project goes back-to-back through it again. It tells you, the, this, this, the narrative is mostly for the, primarily for the, the viewing agency, the band agency, explaining how we got to what we are, what they, what we mean by these things. And then besides, that one, we don't, it's like, there are listed, there may be any question on any of them, but then, on the back sheet, is a brief listing by category, by what certain activities suggest under this progress, project, I should say. And it, it says, see, one is modifying instances, the building, and two, it shows you where they, what, what we're talking about. Then there's internal access, once you have a building, you can be addressed there as well, and you see what's listed, just what on there. And there's also, by the way, a lot of, a lot of funds that should be expected to be suspended for these activities. And there's restroom modification as well, that's the biggest, or the ball. See, on the first one, the old post office, Armory Community Building, Freeport Village Hall, Delvin City Hall, Mackinac Township Hall, Manier Hotel, Market Heights City Hall, and then Armory Hotel, Arminale Health, County and McKenzie Building. And restrooms are listed, McKenzie's Port House, that post office, health department, Arminale Hall, GCRC, Central Township, Mackinac Hotel, Mackinac Community Center, and Market Heights City Hall. The total activities, of the construction item, is 280,0497, with the estimated engineering costs, architectural costs, 67,300. And then the, $24,100, the activity delivery, otherwise called a demonstration, our total period 67,897. And that covers, by reference, the, the Community Development Act, what the economic objectives are, and how we satisfy those objectives. Now, in the case of the project at hand, one of the county's proposals, low-income benefit is the, is the actual objective being addressed, these funds. And by that, it means that the, it also, by virtue of the limited clientele, the activity served, those limited clientele are persons who have, or just disabled, providing access to, to public, public buildings for those persons who are disabled, because they qualify as such, by, they determine them, that's what money comes from, and they determine that by default, those persons are low-income. So it's 100% benefit, part of the fact, those people are off on a ramp, primary purpose is, are those, those individuals. By the way, there's a map on here, shows all the, where the activities in the project, this application would benefit. Those are communities who submitted information to, to us to include in the immediate proposal, and one I mentioned that off a minute ago, as well as the county, of course, don't consider it. And those, for improvements to those facilities, to make them accessible. And we have vetted these activities with band agencies, because this is something that they haven't undertaken for about 25, 30 years. In early, late, early 90s, mid, late 90s, they had a set of type of funds, really a few things like this, and they stopped doing that way back then, and have done since. So the people who were staffing, who were operating the program now, aren't that familiar with the use of funds for the purpose. It's always eligible, but the funds have, in a kind of competitive program annually, have been used up, can I say, by competitive program, a competitive project for water and sewer, and economic development and housing, on a very competitive basis. And there's always more requests to have funds available, there's no room left for activities like this, so they didn't do it. And that, and this, the state, didn't have funds originally, because the American Disability Act was pretty new at the time, and supply and supply had been reaching people to help for any kind of structural changes many years ago, so they said they couldn't, rather did it anymore. But still, eligible activity, and because our loan fund is not competitive, county, county think they're finding for response, back to get. Turn this money back, and this wouldn't want to do with it, and we submitted the application to get that, if you didn't approve. Actually, we talked about, every, about, everything in your buy category, it's just that, that they didn't open up, that should be surprised, it shouldn't have a price here. Now, that's the, the program, and very quick reference, I'm sure I could get you through all that, I could give you, I could take a day, half a day, go through the light, I don't think you want to do that. I went to the workshop this morning, actually, most of the day, and I left before it was over, down here, on this program, and then a half-day tomorrow offer as well, for people who write the application, and for administrative, like I felt, go over detail, and then change it in the, in the program. So I think you see there's quite a bit of information here. And so, but identified that writing, anyone have any question, or want to present here? I'm glad to explain what does anything mean here.
Any questions on the building rehabilitation portion of the hearing here? Okay, see now, can we close this here? Okay, this hearing is closed.
Back to everybody, please put your name on there, please avoid using your hands. Yeah, two men, they're so, and we got a problem.
Start the next hearing in three minutes.
There are two different agendas, one's the next one, it's different, probably, because the hearing was the same, about now, maybe, I don't know what it was, it might be that it's true. Yeah, it's probably, so much, see, they can't do much of that, but, but, after my, you're just looking down, but they say it always, I mean.
Those guys taking care of it, how much?
But, till then.
We'll check it out. Yes, there, I, I, I'm not saying, what can I change, I'm not here, I plan on doing that, but I didn't spend around, I spent, quite a time, right, maybe, there's somewhere, there's more, yeah. I would dream on, I just, I don't know.
Okay, Brian, how are you?
Oh, we got a date. Oh, I can't date her.
Okay, it's 5:30, I'm gonna go get and call the public hearing together for public facilities. As you have an opportunity, there's a sign-up sheet in the back, if you could sign up, that would be great. And at this point, I'll turn the meeting over to, the hearing over to Mr. Jim Cummings. Jim?
Yeah, the, the ten measures here, I hope everyone signed it, who's in attendance. The hearing purpose are to attain citizens' opinions and suggestions and priorities, provide program information, and information in public discussion of project. Program, the national objective, mentioned, I pointed out, I provided here the Community Development Act reference. Prevent low-income persons is the primary national objective, and tell how that can be documented, and the R A, the B, prevention, elimination, slums and blight, meeting at community development need having particular urgency, and then also, eligible activities. The program, the information, the program, provided in the first attachment, for the, especially those who were not here at the first, first hearing, it tells you where these funds came, came from, who administered them, after, under the top, development, and the act it did come from, and how it gets to the point where we have our, what, the loan fund, our closeout. All funding spent regardless of type, it's a more national objective, mentioned on the agenda, right there as well as here, which is three are. First one, it's efforts to low-income persons, which, this may involve whole community, neighborhood, et cetera, but it, it, in this case, we've never had, it's documented in a different fashion. And to, just how does, that can be done under various categories, components of the program, as state has set them out. The setting out of the, by the way, of where they're grouped on the eligible activities on the sheet, is by the state, it's not, HUD does not do that, they don't categorize, they, they have the list, and the state breaks them out in the way they want to do that. As it mentions in the board paragraph, the, the state has, is essentially is the HUD's proxy, its program, that started in the, in the early 80s, taking over the program, and they have maxing feasible deference, in terms of what's eligible, as long as it's not listed ineligible under the act and not agreed. And so, there's a lot of, a lot of leeway for it, that is here, state has, and, and it uses it to its, to its benefit, and your benefit. Most of the common activity undertaken includes a fine head of the public infrastructure, I mentioned, that's what those are, a lot of water and sewer, under the annual competitive program, that, that, that is the local government here today, have benefited this program that has, from the local communities in this county, under that competitive category, and it is what they are. The only thing you wouldn't find there ununtfully in the annual program is the, called streetscape. I can answer that question if you want to know how that works, or could work, if you like to address that, but it isn't something that the county's children number chase, but I'd be still, I'd be still glad to explain how that might work under this program. And then, of course, move up to, to various, sort of limited clientele, that's a quote, so that, because they hard to determine that those persons with limited clientele are those who are disabled, or otherwise low-income by default, and who use facility, and also facilities that are, that are rehabilitated under this program, serve purposes of that nature. In fact, two limited shelters, those that are disabled, assisted housing are considered, considered by default low-income. So also, persons who are considered, are elderly, are considered by default low-income. And so, if a project served those, those populations, then they would be 100% low-income. Architectural barriers, for this particular, for this category here, and for the building, but it does, for the building it serves, and that is, the, those communities that, buildings that, that have, oh, they could, those facilities that are for a public nature, such as courthouse, county offices, city offices, Arminale Hall, and community centers which serve, generally serve the public in general, and low-income activities, the state view, we prefer first of low-income. We have, having libraries, both of this program, county doesn't, but have, other than those, and those, might, might serve low-income persons as a priority as well, because those communities are eligible. They're not, we do not, we do not include police stations and fire stations, do not include salt sheds, they don't include certain other offices, in that nature. Not every public building is, is considered essential, for essential public service. Also, businesses are included in that, not to benefit the business, but in a public facility such as a sidewalk, that, that goes by several public, but, and requires businesses for their power and interest, and don't have, aren't accessible sidewalks that have in front of them, and that include, since most of the sidewalks have, and business in there has fewer setbacks, of the, the county, I meant county, the, the public, right away, it's a bus, private, private platform, down the line, there's always the property line. So there's always, that's essentially enters in the public. And, and the public city, case they be, has a sidewalk, that's their sidewalk, it's not the, it's not, county's not the beginning of business sidewalk. So we, we are allowed to use funds in business area, because they provide a, a daily service, good to service, to persons with disabilities, although people aren't, and so, as, as disabled, can't get up those steps, can't get up a blocked entrance. We replace the sidewalk, so that even with the entrances, they can all get involved. Now, the entrance to the building may not be acceptable itself, we're not going to be building, that, that's, that falls under a different category. And so, so, so we have to hear it, at curb ramps, the curbs, anything that are curbed out, given on ramp correctly, don't have technical warning, for example, why they're too steep, they aren't in good condition, well, good condition, they don't need work, but, but those curb ramps are necessary to go to sidewalks that are in, serve the public, and they include businesses as well as public buildings. So those considered eligible as well, because those are daily activities, that people who just notice can't take advantage of, because they're in public facility, they're viewed, or aren't, they're not quite accessed. And so, that's why those things were included. And parking is included as well, on a limited basis, because there are places where there should be marked, possibly designation spaces, and with a ramp, or with a, with a man loading designation, that meets ADA requirements, and those sort of things, activities are eligible, we're going to undertake. Now, I provided you here, with, by the way, the ineligible activity in the back of this second sheet, that, 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 I had, in the map, what they, community, that's requested system, for their public facility. And there's a project description, project summary, similar to the other one we provided, and it provides where, what activities provided where, and lumped together. Includes curb modifications, which you see is a substantial amount of funds involved in that, there's a lot of need from all of the county, and those are places you want to do it. Have proposed changing, altering, modifying curbs, or reported access ramp for the residential 50. With sidewalks there, well, there's not added access to the street process, and those things are included as well. We don't do a residential, now, there's a very good reason for that, I'll explain that in a minute. But you see the sidewalks, the business area, that includes actual, sidewalk that need to be approved, and you see one here in Armoryton, that is kind of a combination, everybody made it that, it matters just, just the way that category, I said, how it listed in the program. And the, those that are either parking space in front of the tar, either sidewalk, or the first surface in front of the tar, and it's not marked, and so, that needs to be fixed, so that park there can actually get into the, into the hall, but I know it's not. And there are several places like that, and, so, there were the activities that are further located, I'm not going to do all of those, keep mapping on my near Washington. But on the first one, by the way, there's Delvin, it's a, a, South Pecan, Armoryton, Delvin, and Mackinac, mine here in Washington, and then the last one is another parking spot, sits by the community center by Armoryton, and a parking lot for the delicious free tour, because there's not a handicap spot, it's a safe situation there. Now, the total here, 478,007, 1770, construction estimate, and generally 31,891, total total of 550,608.70, activities delivered cost of $30,000, the maximum allowed, and 580,608.70. Two different proposals add up $948,505.70. Yes. So, that's what the, what's been proposed at the county by the community, we reached out to, by letter, or email, to the community, all, every township, the township building as well, Librarians, and Mr. Powers. I didn't reach out to the county, because he was that first in line. If you didn't make it, that's your own fault. We didn't tell you about it, you should already know, or you did. So that's where it started. The project, by the way, the county board, the board made me most interested, it includes the first floor, the freshman, the courthouse, there's a minor restroom modification in the McKenzie Building, in the first floor, essentially, it's very minor, you make it technical. And, potentially, possibly tower-assisted openers curb, most interior doors in the McKenzie Building, because very heavy, hard open. Once this project's underway, we, they would be tested, make sure that we have to do that, there is, there are limitations, and, I'm sure the limitations are standards set out by the registered disability staff, for things like that, we have to measure the way that we have to do that, but at the minimum, a hydraulic closure of a different kind, make the, so easier to open, stay open. Then there's also, the old post office, that ramp outside, get into the west entrance, is not appropriate, it's too steep, that's part of the landing, at the end of the third roof, 30 feet, it's, it's not big enough, and the second landing, we get to the door, it's not big enough, there'll be requirements. And the surface is not good for people who have walkers, or canes, and maybe even, special ground motorola, but it's not suitable for that, should be different kind of surface. That needs to be replaced, and then there's the restroom in the first floor in the, in the old post office. So the, the restroom, they see it quite extensive, a lot of people need them, they have to have a health department, as restrooms are, not wide enough, I don't know why they built that way, but they're not wide enough. And the environmental health, men's restroom being significant number of, but a lot of case may get, it's technical, and women's, men's, women's, any, and then as under the difference to the environmental health, they have a wall, they're about 30 inches, like less than that, from the, the door, the one door in the real church, and the group, it's stuck in the hallway, so there's a private-like door, that, a wall there, has to be taken out, as well, and removed, and changed. GCRC, they had restroom that, that were, built for, 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 for the 1980s, but they're not, do not need to requirement of registered disability staff, not in any way, so those will be modified as well. And so, and there's other communities, buildings we have here, listed in, in, in the authority, that request the funds to modify the restroom in their buildings. I can give you details, I have pictures of my head, from totally, and that's like, I even have a picture of the back of the room, in my folder, more sealed, that I've taken, there are photographs, I've go for every facility, give the application, then what needed, and I've done all that. So that's the program, in its, in its nutshell, in summary, the program in summary, and the activities that it's programmed, and matching where they all are. Yes?
Are there any questions or comments? Yeah, Tony, go ahead.
I have a question about streetscapes that you were talking about for Washington, so, taking care of the sidewalks and the ramps and... taking care of the sidewalks and the ramps and for handicap and wheelchair accessible, but there's a lot of buildings that have steps going into it, so that would be the building's responsibility, or the owner of the building to take care of?
We suppose, um, the case would be sidewalk, the, the number, the number of quick sidewalk are limited, uh, most of them are curb jobs, but, uh, our sidewalks are minimum. The one sidewalk that's probably the best way to point out is South Side Square in Washington. Sidewalk would be elevated, close level would be in, south side block, man, open it, if you have to, it's not, if, that's a public sidewalk, and it, 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 assuming the right-of-way line, popular line meet at the edge of the, the building, the front, uh, front elevation of the building, and the sidewalk then is the third responsibility. And so, they take the sidewalk and boost it up eight inches or so, get it up the sidewalk into, and so, that even that up, and so, that's basically what they do, to the, to the entrance itself, uh, that's up to the, the, uh, the business owners to do that. Now, venture streetscape, that covers a lot more territory than just sidewalk, and a reason, what, that's not included here, that includes planters, benches, right? Because that's not, that's not accessibility issue. You don't need, that's, you don't, there's no requirement, they provide access to a bench, and a planter, that doesn't do any accessibility.
Right, that kind of follows the meanings on Washington.
But that, that's in here, only because there is a, a national objective called the prevention elimination of lumps and blight, that has to follow that category. And then that's a, to do, and you can't do that and sidewalk for any of the same application. So, and, and actually, between the buildings themselves, facade improvements fall in the same lumps and blight category. You have to prove that those buildings are, are blighted in order to do them. And you could do that, but if you do that, you're not doing the sidewalk and the curves and, and the ramp, and the public building, because the public rehabilitation, which otherwise is ineligible, bar ground fund cannot be used for this building, or helping it accept low-income architectural barriers. That's, that's the exception, although, you couldn't go on your fingers.
Okay, any other comments or questions? All right, I want to thank the Village of Creek Court, City of Washington, the T C R C for coming out, and, sorry, if I missed up, Mackinac, Village of Mackinac, so thank you for coming out this evening. So, with that, this committee hearing is closed, for this hearing is closed.